We got our call. Uh, this is the Port Wayne City Council Special Regular Meetings Housing Authority Regular Meeting, and we have a closed session meeting today, November five, twenty eighteen. So do I first go with a roll call?
Councilmember Fig. Councilmember Hensley.
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Present.
Mayor Pro Temberg.
Here.
Mayor Shrum.
And that gives us a quorum, so we would open up with public comments. Anybody want to say anything to us before we go in the back room? Thank you very much. Then I would suggest that we recess.
I have to read the closed session items unfortunately.
Very good.
Not by choice.
I'm getting there.
Uh, there are two closed session items tonight. The first is designated CS three, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. Based on the advice of legal counsel and existing facts and circumstances, a point has been reached in the opinion of the city council that the city is facing significant exposure to litigation under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine sub D sub two. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine sub E sub two, the existing facts and circumstances relate to a dispute over contractual obligation arising out of a lease agreement between marine supply company and the city. Number of potential cases: one. The second is designated CS four, Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representatives: Linda Catherine Lee, Deputy City Manager; Finance Director Ken McDonald; Stephen M. Berlin, our special counsel. Employee organization is SEIU seven twenty-one, Southern California Public Service Workers. That's all Mayor Pro Tem.
Now that that has been clarified, I think we can now go into closed session. We'll be back in about half an hour. Thank you.
Um, I don't know if you can see it. It's just a little bit. 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 Okay. That's what my wife gets. This is my wife. She has all kinds of...
Hi.
You mean with all three of you? Um, Richard, Tom, Richard, Mike, and me.
I'm gonna look at it. I have to see it here.
Yeah. I guess maybe the... I don't know. 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 No, it's not about you. It's not about me anymore. Okay. Are you guys... Did they do...
So you're in the hallway, so you're like... Yes. You're... Yes. So you put the light up. Maybe you turn on the... So you noticed all day... I haven't seen it.
Yeah. This is... This whole...
My dear, we only have one of the kids. This is so interesting. This is terrible. Sounds weird. So maybe we need to... I mean, something still... I think so. But I don't... I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to... It's always kind of... I don't know. I think up there, up there, table over there, off that hill.
Just... Just... I just didn't get it right. As you know, this is... This is my experience. Okay. And, um, I've talked for two minutes. To just be able to stand up and be trying to stay... I was doing something. But we don't have to... What?
Yeah. We can...
Yeah. 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 But it's all... I had a problem with my wife. She's like... She's not even saying anything. She knows. Just... Like, like, are you guys wondering this stuff really annoying? I think it's like, that's annoying, but she doesn't have to say it. Right? We have any... And, and in a way, the funny thing is, we're dead. Okay. We're... We got nothing else to say.
He wants that boy. Sorry about it.
Yeah. It's... I don't know. I don't know. Great thing.
Um, I think Paul should... I don't know.
I don't know. It's really... Okay. But a real... So it's... Yeah. I said... I didn't know my person. Right? So, you know, Saturday's... Saturday's...
Space. You have a little...
Yeah. That's... That's fine.
And we have...
I mean, we're... And we are... But it does... We're... It's not... That's...
That's good. I don't... Yeah.
And... We really...
Oh. I'm... 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 So... So...
I...
So... 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 So...
I... I... I...
Yeah. 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 So... Yeah. 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 Yeah.
There was... There was... Um... I'm... 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 I wonder where he is. So... I'm... I think...
Yeah. We hear that.
Yeah.
I'm just... I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. They're down. I mean, it's not... Yeah. Right.
Yes.
Just... 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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Time that we have this all... I don't... I'm... I don't... Well, I'm... I think...
I'm... 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 I'm...
Yeah. So...
Well, you lose the place. It's... I'm... 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 I'm...
I'm not gonna cover her, so... I don't give a shit. I'm... Uh, I do not have any... Whether it's on your... I mean, as... I mean, I... I mean, she... I'm worried. I actually... I don't know. I'm... I'm... I said... Yeah.
That's what she has. Beans and beans.
Or... Fight him. Fight him. I'm... 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 She... I got another... I'm... 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 I'm...
Do you know... Do you know... Sure. Sure. That's good. And this is...
About science. Yeah. That's... Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. Just... Just... I want to... Please. Uh-huh. Please.
It was huge. I did it all. Yeah. So...
How many... Yeah. Your time. Just... Yeah.
Talk to her. Yeah. We told you. We don't have... That's all. We can't... We have... That's... It's... 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 I guess this is... So... I... So... So...
Okay. Um...
Um... Well... So... 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 So...
Yeah. I think...
Yeah. Um... She has... And... I'd be like this.
I...
Yes.
Is it...
That's right. And where is fifteen? That's right. I... I'm... 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 Uh... Two months. What did you... Yeah. Yeah. I'm... So...
Yeah. I...
I...
Thanks.
Oh. Yeah. I... Oh. Yeah. I... I... So... So... So...
So... She's...
I...
She's... I know.
Um... So... Um...
I know. I'm... 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 No, that was... I thought... I'm... I'm... Okay. I... 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 Um... I... I...
Well... I guess... I mean, I was... I mean, I... I... Uh... I don't know. But... So... Okay. So... I'm sorry. If they're... I'm... 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 Love that. So... I... I think I'm...
Yeah. We... We... I'm... 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 I'm...
I'm... I'm...
I don't know. I'm... 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 I'm...
Yeah. So... Um... So... Great.
So... So... So...
Yeah. Yeah. So... Yeah. 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 So... But, um... So...
I think...
I don't... I don't see... I don't think this is... I have... I... Um...
I'm... Exactly.
I... Good. Right. Great.
Should've done...
Sorry. Great. Um... Something... Yeah. Get your... I... I... Yes. Should've done...
I can begin with... I'm watching this.
Delivery. Yeah. Is delivery over? Yeah. Yeah, that's them. So it's just a second reading.
I'm sorry, I wrote over his, but this is a thank you from Tom King. Can you read that?
Mm-hmm.
I have the first hand writing.
Okay. So this is the last one. Jim, don't go anywhere at six thirty.
Good evening, we'll call the six thirty regular meeting agenda to order here. And calling this meeting to order, we'll start with the flag salute, followed by the inspiration by Councilmember John Sharkey.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, that's good. Um, keep that one down, okay. Um, way back in the twentieth century, uh, my very first inspirational, I read this passage, this is the well-known Athenian oath. And I thought bringing it full circle would be a good idea. And if we had any of our candidates here, uh, I would offer this as a gift to them. We will never bring disgrace on this city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice. We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will revere and obey the city's laws and will do our best to incite a like reverence and respect in those above us who are prone to annul them or set them at naught. We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty. Thus, in all these ways, we will transmit this city not only not less, but greater and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharkey. Well put, and I believe that might be the last time you read an inspiration here in front of this group.
With any luck.
So, thank you. Okay, could we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Hensley?
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Present.
Mayor Protemberg?
Here.
Mayor Schnop?
Here.
And Councilmember Fig has an excused absence. So, we have the agenda before us, item number four.
Who to approve?
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, motion carries, agenda is approved. And then we go on to item number five, reportable actions from closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to item CS three, which was conference with legal counsel on, uh, anticipated litigation regarding marine supply in the city. Uh, the city council approved, uh, two documents in closed session, one is a settlement agreement with the tenant. And the other is a surrender of lease by the tenant. Uh, the settlement agreement will call for, uh, almost immediate vacation of the premises by the tenant who is in default. Uh, and the payment of, uh, approximately seventy-one thousand dollars by the tenant to resolve his, uh, uh, past due, uh, rentals. Uh, that is a settlement, is not a payment in full, uh, due to the financial condition of the tenant. Uh, and to avoid, uh, settle, a bankruptcy by the tenant, which would unlikely, would likely result in cense on the dollar, the council will settle for that amount. Uh, the settlement was approved on a motion by Councilmember Hensley and a second by Councilmember Sharkey. And, uh, was approved unanimously. There was no reportable action on item CS four, which is conference with labor negotiators. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, so at this time, the city council will recess to conduct business of the housing authority. And we'll reconvene the city council meeting upon conclusion of the housing authority meeting. So with that, let's call the housing authority regular meeting to order, may we have the roll call, please? Member Brown?
Here.
Member Hensley?
Here.
Member Sharkey?
Uh, present.
Vice Chair Berg?
Here.
Can we get, uh, you know?
Chair Schnop? Here. And, uh, member Fig has an excused absence. So, let's move on to HA two, agenda review. Is there a motion?
Who to approve?
Second, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Motion carries and agenda is approved. Consent agenda is item HA three.
Who to approve?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? So, motion carries, consent agenda is approved unanimously. And then we have housing authority open forum, HA four. So, anyone wishing to speak to the board on any matter or not on the agenda may do so at this time. And this is for housing authority, is that housing? No. I have speaker cards, but I believe they represent city council meeting. Okay, all right, so anyone wishing to speak to housing authority? All right, so then we move on, seeing no one, uh, to speak to this group, then we have board comments for housing authority. Are there any board comments? Member Brown?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Member Hensley?
No, not at this time.
Anyone else? Member Sharkey? Okay, so with that, then we will, um, end the housing authority meeting and reconvene to the city council regular meeting. So with that, we are on item number six for the city council meeting, that's open forum. And we reserve thirty minutes here for public comments on anything that is not on the agenda. And we do allow about three minutes for each. If we run out of thirty minute time, then those that wish to speak could do that at the end of the meeting. So I'll go in order here, I'll call two people up, the first one at the podium, the next one on standby. Steve Kenny is our first speaker, followed by Becky Bruning.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Excuse me, I'm Steve Kenny, I'm here tonight as the president of the REACH Board of Directors. I just wanted to report to you tonight on the very happy and successful conclusion of the first phase of the REACH commemorative brick campaign. We have some, um, photographic evidence of the event itself, took place a week ago last Saturday, um, down by the beach. Um, and I just have to say, number one, the city public works guys did a tremendous job of the actual installation of all the bricks. Um, we had over a hundred people there for the occasion, about an hour and a half, right on, on the beach on a nice afternoon. And clearly you can see from the pictures, the highlight of it all was the bricks and the connection that the participants there made with the bricks. Um, most of them there represented some family connection, whether living or passed. And, uh, once we had the actual unveiling of the bricks, people just swarmed around there and, and stayed there, milled around until they could point to, finally find their brick. And then they had all sorts of selfies and group photos taken with the bricks, just like that, that you see. So, it, I mean, it just exceeded our, um, our expectations for sure as to the, the community connection that was made through that event. And we hope will stimulate, you know, an additional round, we, we have, um, more bricks to sell and we'll do so on a continuing basis through the course of the year. And then when we have another suitable number, then we'll do another event like this for a mass installation and unveiling so that that group of people can then participate. Um, so it was terrific all around, I just have to say thank you to the city for all the logistical support that you gave. Um, REACH Board was terrific. Um, your own city clerk, Michelle, on her volunteer time, really shepherded this project through from A to Z. Uh, the concept, execution, follow-up, everything, it was really a triumph, um, of her skills. Um, and on balance, uh, that, that's it, just a bit of good news, hopefully to start the, the meeting tonight. We really appreciated the community support for that event.
And if anybody wants to, if anybody wants to reach REACH, how can they do that?
Um, recommend the website as the first point of contact, which is www dot REACH Wainimi, which is spelled with only one H in the, in the middle. R E A C Wainimi dot org.
Okay.
And there's a, there is a email address on there and a phone number as well, and all the information about the mission of REACH, what we do, how money is spent. And, uh, some, some of these visuals as well. I, I will tell you, by the way, that, um, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar outcome in terms of net proceeds for, for REACH. So, we certainly regarded it as a very successful fundraiser as well. That was on top of the twenty thousand dollar grant that the Ventura County Community Foundation awarded us earlier in the year to support the event. Um, so needless to say, I'm very happy with it, I won't go on any further. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Steve. So next we have Becky Bruning, followed by... Becky Bruning, you have two, the museum and the Friends of the Bard, okay. Becky will be followed by Greg Boyashin.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council staff. The first item is the museum, I'm here to tell you what we got coming up. On the eleventh, we will have our third annual Veterans Day celebration here in front of City Hall at eight o'clock in the morning. On November seventeenth, Mayor Protem Wilburg will be speaking. Life aboard a cruise ship. So that should prove to be interesting. And then the following day on Sunday at noon, on the eighteenth, we're going to have Joy Todd with the Monarch Butterflies in the Pleasant Valley Museum Garden. On the first Sunday of every month, we have rock painting classes. The second Sunday, sea glass classes. The third Friday, we do a tour of the harbor. On the third Sunday, we have knot tying classes. The fourth Sunday, we have scrapbooking classes. And every second and fourth Thursday, we have origami classes. Our next lighthouse tour will be January nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. And on May the fourth, two thousand nineteen, we are going to have our youth involvement fair at the community center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the next one is Friends of the Bard Mansion. We are now in conjunction with the Port Wainimi Historical Museum. And, uh, we have several new board members. So we are coming up with a lot of new and better ideas for the coming year. Um, on December the fourteenth, we will have our holiday dinner at the mansion. There are flyers and dinner reservations on the table in the back of the room for anyone that's in the audience who's interested. And we will have, at the dinner, we will have the Boys and Girls Club and Rick Ash performing, as well as singing Christmas carols and socializing. There will be no guest speaker.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
Uh-huh.
So we have Greg Boyashin, is that it? Boyashin?
Very good.
Okay, followed by Maria Ventura.
Better than anything I've heard lately. Thank you for having me, thank you for having us. My question is, uh, we have a concern, I live at Surfside Three. And the concern that we all have over there is the odor coming from the new Indy plant and the wastewater management treatment plant. Um, it's getting worse and worse and worse, we are prisoners in our homes. We cannot open our windows, we cannot sleep with our windows open, we cannot have anybody over for morning coffee, for dinner, for lunch, it's an embarrassment. Everybody on God's earth has a right to fresh air and clean water. And I understand that the new Indy plant serves to recycle cardboard and generate power, and I'm all for it. But they have to be a better neighbor if they're gonna live too close to us. Now, we're right on the border of Port Wainimi and Oxnard, it's Oxnard's problem, but we need you folks to help us. We need a commitment that somebody is going to do something about this. Uh, we're not asking New Indy to move, we understand the wastewater treatment plant is not going anywhere. They need infrastructure work. And I don't know what we're gonna do, we're really stuck over there. And Oxnard is our sister city, they cannot just pollute on us and allow it to keep going because they're making money or creating a few jobs over there, I'm all for that. But we have a right to fresh air over there, and it smells like sewage, it smells like rotten onions, and it's mostly the new Indy plant. And I don't know what anybody's gonna do or can do about it, but you folks have to help us. You cannot just forget about this and pretend it's not happening, you don't live there, you don't smell it. We do, and it is just, it's terrible, I don't know what we can do about it, I, you know? I guess we're here out of exasperation, I suppose I could get kind of angry and lose it because it's just really terrible sometimes, but we need your help, I don't want to insult anybody. I don't want to see New Indy go anywhere. But they could be a better neighbor. The man that owns New Indy is Robert Kraft, he owns the New England Patriots. He is a multi-billionaire with a B. He probably spends more on his shoes and his shirts than I earn in a year. He can afford to fix that plan up and be a better neighbor to us. And I would like some help from you folks, we need your help, you've gotta help us. The children, they can't go outside and play, it's getting into the schools. Um, it's a health hazard, we don't know what's in that, in that odor. We don't know. The new Indy plant runs a turbine twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, God knows what's gonna happen on Thanksgiving or Christmas, what we're gonna get. So, I would like some help from you folks on that, and whatever you can do, thank you.
Thank you, Greg, and, um, just for that, I know that Councilmember Sharkey has been part of it. Because the item is not agendized, we can't discuss it, but I think maybe, um, Councilmember Sharkey can just say a few notes here.
Well, Madam Mayor, I can, I can report out, I just heard from the, uh, Air Pollution Control Officer just before I came into the meeting, but rather than take time from the, uh, the open forum folks, why don't we let them all talk first and then?
And then come back to that, so we'll get to that in a minute. Right, Maria?
Thank you, good evening, uh, Mayor Schnop, uh, Mayor Protemberg, council members and city manager, and the residents of Port Wainimi. My name is Maria Ventura, and I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company here in Ventura County. As you may know, um, SoCal Gas distributes natural gas to Port Wainimi, allowing your residents to heat their homes and water, cook meals and dry clothes economically and safely. Natural gas brings comfort and convenience to your residents. The employers in Port Wainimi also rely on natural gas to cook meals and restaurants, to heat hotel rooms, and in many industrial processes. Natural gas is affordable and abundant, and the energy source of choice at home and businesses for many purposes I just stated. Natural gas is part of a balanced energy portfolio you and your constituents enjoy. I'm here tonight to raise your awareness of an ongoing issue here in California about which many people are unaware. California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio, California wants to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass the legislature this year would have required all new buildings to build after twenty twenty-two to be all electric. And would have required existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all electric by twenty thirty. While this proposal did not pass, you can be assured more similar proposals will be forthcoming. Think about how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in summer, and how relatively little you pay for natural gas to heat your home in winter. Imagine paying those high bills all year round because you are now forced to do what you do now with a natural gas, with electricity. The proposals to force you to electrify your home are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gas and carbon emissions and other environmental goals. These goals are laudable, but a cost benefit analysis cannot justify such drastic, drastic actions. And you and every homeowner, business owner in Port Wainimi are the ones who will pay. Let me be clear, SoCal Gas is not against all electrification. If you want to only use electric appliances in your home, that's your right, you can do that now. But don't take away that choice from those who want to use other fuel options. The fact is virtually every home here in Port Wainimi already has electricity and also already have natural gas. This is balance. Californians enjoy the balance, want the balance, and expect this balance to continue. I'm alerting you and this, that this balance is threatened, and with it that economic stability of family and business could be threatened too. Forcing homeowners to replace natural gas appliances, furnace, stove, water, heater, dryer, so on and so on. Average cost of seventy-two hundred dollars for that first year, and an additional cost of at least three hundred eighty-eight dollars per year on top of that. There is an alternative, it's called biogas, where we can capture the, um, that natural gas emissions from wastewater treatment facilities, from sewer plants, from that sort of thing. And we could put that renewable natural gas into our system. If only sixteen percent of that renewable natural gas is ejected to our system, it's, it has a net effect of electrifying everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maria. And to... Thank you, Maria. And next after that, we have Steve Biddle, followed by Julia Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. I come before you as a citizen of Port Huinimi. I've been a resident with my wife for six and a half years of the Hideaway Complex, which is on Industrial Boulevard across from the old city storage yard and service facility. We're also concerned about the smell and air quality that's been going on. Primarily, it's gotten increasingly worse this last year. It was an occasional event for a night or two previous to the year, last year or two before that. Now it's becoming almost a nightly event to the point where my wife wakes up with headaches. The noise wakes me up in the evening. It's almost every evening. We've been involved with Tom Dunn and some of the groups that's starting to become active in Port Huinimi. My wife is a health professional and has been logging and gathering health information. She's currently in contact with Ventura County health officials and gathering this evident, the, the evidence and concerns of our residents on the next door site. They said we're also, the, the Hideaway community is our, our next door neighbor is right across the drainage channel is the Oxnard wastewater plant. And, and then across the street from them is the New Indy plant. I've been around many wastewater treatment plants. The smell that's predominantly coming out is not the wastewater treatment plant. It's really easy to tell the difference. And anyone who's ever been around a paper mill or paper pulp facility, they know that smell. It's rotten eggs. And, and that's what, it literally will wake us up to the point of being noxious at night. You go over there at night and loud, huge industrial sounds and, and the turbine sound, which is a fan system in the boiler. I don't know how they can, we've called for about five years to the Ventura County air quality. Previous to this year, the response was always, we came out the next day and checked and everything was fine. They were never willing to take action past that. They're now in the process of setting up monitors of their own. And we look forward to the council becoming involved as, as we are in Port Huinimi, a customer of the wastewater treatment plant. So I feel that, that you as our representatives can carry those concerns because we are paying them for that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have Julia Jarvis, followed by Tom King.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'm also a resident of the Hideaway. We have 84 units there. We moved there because of wanting to be near the ocean. We're from Colorado originally. And I was looking forward to the good, clean air. We didn't get air conditioning because I figured out that, you know, two blocks away from the ocean, I shouldn't need air conditioning. But now sadly, if we're going to stay there, we may have to put it in. Every night, we have to close out, close all the windows down. It's, it's a caustic, burn-your-throat odor. And it stays close to the ground so that when you go out in the morning, it's still hugging the ground surface. So we have to wait till like 10 o'clock in the morning for things to start getting clear, and I can open my windows up around 1:00 to get clean air back in the house. We have 84 units at the Hideaway, and I would be a terrible area to become a ghost town because it's not livable. I, I definitely think it's the New Indy Container Board Company. It's not, it's not the waste company. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Tom King, followed by Chase Shockley.
Madam Mayor, City Council Staff, I'm here today as a fellow homeowner, representing myself and my wife. The city council is going to go through a transition tomorrow. And I, as a resident, I wanted to say thank you. I did want to acknowledge Tom Fake and John Sharkey in particular. We don't know all the work that goes on behind the scenes. There's times where we may agree, agree to disagree. There are very important issues. You heard some today. I think you'll hear more on that. Mr. Berg was at the meeting. That was very well organized. You had over 60 people that were very articulate about the noxious odors issue. But I did want to acknowledge, as best I could, just a thanks for the service that you all put in. I know it's difficult. The new council is going to have a lot to deal with. But as a homeowner in the community, I wanted to say thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Chase Shockley.
My name is Chase Shockley, and I'm a resident at Surfside Three. There are days when we wake up and there are big plaque plumes of putrid, disgusting smells. Me and my family, we have to walk to the bus stop. We have to walk to get places. And we sometimes have to wait to where we're almost late because we can't go outside. It's so bad to where we almost feel like we're going to throw up. And I don't, and my family and me, we don't appreciate it. And I do understand that it's, you guys are working on it. But we moved here about a year ago. The smells were, every few days, on and off. But now it's gotten to the point where we wake up every other day, every day, in the morning, at night, 3:00 AM, 12:00, midnight. And it's just bad. It's like bad for our health. I am a sports person. We like to go to the park. We can't do that anymore, and that's not fair. Me and my friends, we like to go skateboarding around the park and around everywhere else. We can't do that sometimes. Sometimes they're like, oh, it smells. I don't want to come out today. Like, no, let's just do it tomorrow. And then the next day, it smells. We can't do it again. We feel embarrassed having people over. When it's Thanksgiving, we can't have the people over. We have to go over to them. We always go over to them because we feel embarrassed because we can't have people over. Because it smells and we just, we don't want to like promote that, like we've lived in a smelly place and we can't go outside. Because we're all kids. We like to play. And I know we're working on it. Maybe things could speed up a little bit. Maybe we need to like jump on it a little bit more. But I don't know. It's just not okay. And I said this last time, me and my friends don't want to remember growing up as it smelling and we couldn't go outside. We want to have those fun memories in the park where we're having water fights, water balloon fights. We're doing like this fun stuff. And we can't do that anymore because it smells. And yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So are there any others in the audience that wish to speak to the council? All right. So then, Councilmember Sharkey.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, yeah. Obviously, we've got a serious situation here. You know, I'm not saying we never had problems with the previous owner, but it seems like things have ramped up considerably in the last recent past. One of the, I dare say fortunate, but we have three members of the Air Pollution Control Board in this area. We have, of course, Supervisor Kelly Long. We have Mayor Protem Carmen Ramirez, and I'm on that board as well. When this current situation came to my attention, I got on, contacted our Air Pollution Control Officer, Mike Viegus. The Air Pollution Control Officer is essentially the executive director of the, of the Air Pollution Control District. He answers to the board. And I brought this up at the board meeting as well. And Mr. Viegus is taking an enforcement officer. He took him off another job, actually, and brought him over here to try to expedite this process. And I just, just heard from Mr. Viegus just before I came over here, and what, we know one little thing which doesn't help us a lot, but it helps us some. I know there's been some concerns with the, the tanks in front of the, the paper plant. Apparently, those tanks are just processed water with only trace amounts of chemicals in them. So as we go through our analysis, that's one potential source we can cross off the list. You know, and I, I agree, it doesn't smell like a wastewater treatment plant. What I smelled was not a wastewater treatment plant. So the thing about hydrogen sulfide gas, and a lot of you probably know this already, is that you can, even though that is a constituent that is in the jurisdiction of the Air Pollution Control District, you can smell that at levels that are far below anything any instrument can measure or any enforceable level. So we may not be in a situation where it's an air quality issue. Mr. Viegus has been talking with the State Air Resources Board and the County Environmental Health. But at a minimum, what we have is a nuisance. And that is Oxnard code enforcement territory. I know the Oxnard City Council is on this. They have instructed their staff to work on this. I'm hopeful that we'll get a more complete report from the enforcement officer. And okay, we're in the holidays. Government doesn't work much in the holidays. But I'm hoping we can get something here in the next two or three weeks that will, will give us a, a definitive source for what's going on here. And if, if it is something that is, is enforceable from, from APCD, then that will be the step. If it is a nuisance level, then that's going to have to be taken, steps are going to have to be taken by the City of Oxnard on that, on that. And, and I know their city council is, is concerned about it because they hear about it. They've heard from you. They hear from me. And they, and they've got their staff on this. Now, the second part of this, of course, is the wastewater treatment plant. And anybody that's talked to me in the last couple of years knows that this is very high on, on my list of concerns. It's, it's a great thing that Assemblymember Irwin got us, was the $6 million for repairs. It needs to be repaired, clearly. But that's not enough. That's not enough. It, we need to build a completely new system that's away from, way from the beach, away from potential sea level rise. You know, we just heard from the gas company, cogeneration. Cities all over the country are doing that. You know, there are recoverable things. The agent, the days, days of treating wastewater and dumping it out at the ocean are gone. I don't know if you've been following the papers. We're looking at the groundwater, state mandated groundwater management plan that's being developed. And I don't know what that's going to be at the end. That's still in process. But I will lay odds that in five years, we'll have less water than we have now. The only way we're going to get new water is through reclamation. And we need, we need to get on this. I've been hammering the Oxnard City Council on this. Mayor Flynn and I agreed we were going to have a joint meeting of the cities back in July. But then there were court cases. There were recalls. There's a new election. They had to get their staff. They have a new city manager. And here we are in November, and it still hasn't happened. But I'm hopeful because I've met the new Oxnard City Manager, and he seems like a very capable guy. I hope they have a very stable staff. We've got a lot more stability here. I'm a little concerned about the election because there's some people running over there that may not be into this. But if you look at people like Carmen Ramirez and Mayor Flynn and Bert Pirello and Brian McDonald, all the, all the council is on this. And I don't know who's going to be sitting in this chair next year. But I will hope they pick up the banner and move it forward because we need to do that. I just talked to Bert Pirello last week, and he says, you realize they just rated Oxnard B+ in credit rating? If you know anything about, you know, credit ratings, it's not good. And that's always the problem. Port Huinimi doesn't have any money. Oxnard's got a bad credit rating. So we have a million reasons not to do this. But in this city, I go back to when we rebuilt the sewer system, our sewer collection system. We went to the Economic Development Administration, and we were able to get money. Look at our demographics. We've got military benefits. We've got environmental benefits. We, what we can't do as, as our own city, we need to do this as a region. And if we do this, then we can provide for the water needs for a quarter million people for the next 40 years. Or not. And that's the choice. So we have an immediate problem here. And, you know, I can't, you know, sit here as an official and make a judgment. I have my own opinions of what's going on. You do too. I think you're right, by the way. I can say that much. But if all we do is, is, is fix this one little problem, we haven't solved the big problem. And I remember 30 years ago, being on the Ormond Beach Task Force with Roar Ambrose and Gene Harris, and looking at the future of Ormond Beach. And we knew these industrial properties were there. And we knew we couldn't get rid of them, but we knew they would outlive their lifespan. And they're starting to do it. Halico's closed. I mean, you can criticize the EPA for their face of cleanup, but that plant's no longer in operation. The day will come when that wastewater plant is no longer there, and when the paper plant is no longer there, and we'll be back to a more appropriate coastal use. And that's where we have to get to. But in the meantime, Mike Viegus tells me this has taken up a lot of, a lot of time and energy over the Air Pollution Control Board at the district. And there are a lot of people working really hard to try to solve this. And as I say, I'm really hopeful that we'll have some, some reasonable answer, at least some notion of what is actually going on there in the next, I hope, three weeks. And, you know, we'll try to stay on top of that. Thanks.
So with that, could I, Mr. City Manager, could I ask that we would put this on a future agenda for a presentation, whether it's by the public works, or give Councilmember Sharkey a little bit more time to speak about updates that have come through on this?
Sure, we can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hensley.
May, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'll try to kiss this, keep it short and simple. I, I know what it's like. I lived in a foster home outside of Tacoma, Washington years ago in high school, and they had a pulp mill there. And I was kind of ostracized from the school because my clothes reeked with that pulp mill smell. The car's finish was always falling apart. Later on in broadcasting, I was in Eureka, California. They had a pulp mill. And if I went to see them for my job at the radio station for advertising, they had showers for cars. When you came out, you washed your car each time. And, and as far as Halico, this area has always been kind of the stepchild, the redheaded stepchild. And it's the burn dump out there, then the Halico. And I'm wondering, because Halico was finally stopped by the Santa Barbara Channel Keepers Association or Organization. We need to get beyond this. We may have to look at a suit of some sort following environmental organizations that can perform a lawsuit and bring pressure on these people either to move it or get it cleaned up, one or the other. And that's my point. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hensley. All right. So then we move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the consent agenda. We're approving items 7A through 7F. And if I can ask for clarification here on the agenda, it says underneath that, Mayor, to take any public comment. So I'll stop at this time to see if there's any public comment on the items that are under consent agenda, items 7A through 7F. So seeing none, then we continue on. And City Attorney, it says you must read by title only.
Only if it's approved. So the vote would take place prior to that.
Okay.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I will note abstention on the minutes as I was not here for the meeting.
Okay. So that, that'll be noted. And Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item D in, in the consent agenda is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance approving development agreement number PHDA-852 Harvest Bloom Dispensary, located at 521 West Channel Islands Boulevard Suites 9 through 10. The ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance Approving an..." "An Ordinance Approving and Adopting a Development Agreement Under Government Code Section 65864 to 65869.5, and Ordinance Number 727 and 734 of the Port Wainimi Municipal Code relating to the operation of a cannabis facility, Harvest Bloom." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then, we move all the way to item number eight, and this is Public Works Director Reports and Comments. And so, Mr. Camarillo, welcome.
Unavailable today, so I'm giving this here. What you have before you is authorization to purchase...
Is your microphone on? Is his mic on?
Yeah, just need to get it closer?
Yes.
Better?
Thank you.
What you have before you is the authorization to purchase two police utility vehicles through a cooperative purchasing program. We've used it in the past, council has approved this method in the past. It used to be known as the National Joint Powers Alliance, and it is the same organization, they just went through a name change. They are now called Sourcewell. This would be for one vehicle that was originally approved in the 2017, 18, 19 budget process. And then our chief came back to you for an additional vehicle on September 17th, which was also approved. So this is just the authorization to go ahead and proceed with the actual purchase of these two vehicles.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Camarillo?
If nothing else, unless there's gonna be public comment.
Yeah, there's a question. Hold on just a second. So...
Yeah. What's a utility vehicle?
It's the police SUV style of vehicle that you see. It's a Ford.
Yeah, they call it the Interceptor, don't they? But it's like, it's like a Explorer, kind of?
It's similar to an Explorer, yes.
And we have one right now?
Yes, we have one of those.
So we're gonna have three in total?
Correct. And we'll be sending to auction two of the other vehicles that have outlived their life.
Blues Brothers.
Okay, so with that...
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Camarillo. Good to see you. And then next, we have item number nine, Chief of Police Report and Comments. Oh, there's the chief. Hey, chief. How are you?
Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, I'm here to give you my monthly report. Is this mic on? Yes, it's on. Thank you.
I couldn't hear you. And I want to hear every word.
Because we canceled our last meeting, this is actually the September report I'm giving now in November. I can't give the results of October because of the short five-day time span with this past weekend, and now we're on Monday. We don't have the official results or statistics for October. So I'll only be presenting for the month of September. Here we have our crime statistics for the month of September. This is actually our second lowest month of the year in terms of total crime. We had five violent crimes during the month of September, no homicides, no rapes, two robberies, and three aggravated assaults, one being an attempted stabbing and attempted shooting, and then a serious assault involving a domestic violence incident. As you can see, still with our larceny and thefts, which really drives our total crime, 25% of our thefts this month were shoplifts. So I often get these types of questions in terms of our dispensaries, and so every month I try and give the council a marijuana dispensary update, that being, so we have a total of four dispensaries right now. And I often get the question is, how many employees does each dispensary actually have on its staff, as well as how many actually work from the city of Port Wainimi? And so here is a breakdown. Three of the four actually have anywhere between 14 and 15 employees, while actually From the Earth has a total of 22 employees on staff. And From the Earth actually has the most employees from the city of Port Wainimi with a total of four. So out of 66 total employees from our four dispensaries, nine of them are actually from the city of Port Wainimi, with the most coming from the city of Oxnard at 29. So this past month during October, I thought it was important to report it now, on Thursday, October 18th, we had our first significant incident at one of our dispensaries. At midnight, we had a suspect come up to the front window of the Safeport Dispensary located in the 300 block of West Channel Islands Boulevard, take a hammer to the window, and then immediately flee the scene. We believe that this was a straight vandalism based on the video footage. He didn't attempt to break any more of the glass in the one strike, and then he fled the area. We were immediately notified by the alarm system, and we arrived two and a half minutes later. We could not locate the suspect, but the alarm system did exactly what it was designed to do. Here on our left, this morning, we had a very similar incident at Skunk Masters located at the 2600 block of North Ventura Road. Again, two assailants this time took what appeared to be with a hammer and started vandalizing the front window. We think in this case, they were attempting to actually make access. But again, the alarm system and the design of the glass and feature, security features inside of the business did exactly what they were supposed to do and prevented entry. So this past month, in September, as you know, we had the Banana Festival, and I wanted to bring this up. At our last meeting, I talked about this fundraiser we were gonna do with Dunka Cop. And this fundraiser actually got our Explorer program almost $3,000 on top of a $1,000 donation from the lofts of Charles Green. And so the Explorers made almost $4,000 for this Dunka Cop event that we had this past month. So I wanted to report that. I also wanted to let council know how we've been continuing to address traffic and pedestrian safety issues. Here is a black box. Sometimes you often see a very similar box on a telephone pole in your neighborhood or on a street, and there's usually black tubes that run from it. Due to technology now, you don't need the black tubes. They use camera equipment inside of this box, and it counts vehicles as well as records the data of speed. And it's a little more inconspicuous as the big speed radar trailer signs that we use that tell you how fast you're going. So people consciously slow down, and you don't really get that true data. Here, this is a little, very much more hidden, and will get us a little better data. We've just ordered this device, which should be arriving here in the next week, and we'll be deploying this device, device in the many neighborhoods when we get complaints from our citizens. And we'll be able to get that true data as to whether or not there's actually a speed problem in that location. Community partnerships and engagement. So Fiesta Patrias was this past month in September. I went to the festivities at Plaza Park in the city of Oxnard as a representative of the city of Port Wainimi. Here, you see me addressing the 2,000 people in the crowd, doing what's called El Grito. So I addressed the crowd in Spanish as a representative, again, from the city of Port Wainimi. And then the following morning, I had the fortunate privilege of actually being a guest judge and judging the Fiesta Patrias Parade the following day. And there you can almost see, that's our very own Gabby Basua in the yellow Corvette there, who was also part of the parade festivities. Also, in the month of September, our Explorers went to National Kids Day, which was held at the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard in Port Wainimi at the Fifth Street Club. They had a booth there and provided many different activities, as well as information to our youth, as well as, there was a presentation onstage that I was a part of, along with the County Board of Supervisors and the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. And that's what you see there on the bottom picture. So just another instance of us involved in our community. Holiday dates to remember. Get your pencils ready, your pens ready here to write down some of these dates. We have our holiday tree lighting ceremony coming up on Thursday, November 29th. Here are some pictures from last year. We will have snow out there again this year, thanks to the base, no, excuse me, thanks to the port, which is actually gonna donate the 20 tons of snow this year for this event. We have our Shop with a Cop event on Friday, December 8th, where we'll go out and shop for all the toys for our Cops for Tots event here in the city of Port Wainimi. And that's scheduled again for December 8th at the Walmart located on Savior's Road. And you can see our treasure here from last year. On Tuesday, the city is sponsoring their senior citizen holiday luncheon, Tuesday, December 11th. Again, here are some pictures from last year's event. As you can see, it's pretty much sold out there in our community center. I don't think I've ever seen it that full. And then another picture of some of our servers there.
Chief, going back up to Shop with a Cop, first Friday of December is actually the 7th. Is that, did you mean to say it's the 7th?
I did. Thank you for correcting me. And then, of course, Friday, December 21st, our Cops for Tots event that was very successful. We had 700 children that were served last year, and we hope to serve 1,000 this year. Again, we'll be providing toys to all of those children that are registered in the city of Port Wainimi, as well as some of South Oxnard, as well as having a face painter, a couple of balloon artists, and other festivities. I wanted to briefly talk about and give you an update about the homeless transient issue out on our beaches. So Oxnard did start a couple of weeks ago. They started in the dead end of Arnold Road and worked their way towards Ormond Point, and they ran out of money. They didn't realize what a big disaster or project it was. In their first week, they picked up 52 tons of trash, and they quickly ran out of money. So now they're looking for more money so they can actually continue actually along the beach towards our city. I went out there today, and so these encampments are still there. We went out today, I personally went out there, and we counted 12 different encampments right there along Ormond Beach Lagoon, which is about 100 yards from our border. And they continue on for about half a mile. Here are some pictures of this morning or afternoon when I was out there. As you can see, this gentleman even has his duck floaty, which he uses out in the lagoon and out on the ocean. He's really established himself there. You can actually see a Port Wainimi trash can there next to the doorway of his tent that he uses, that he's drug all the way out there on the sand. I mean, that's a good half mile away. In this next picture, these people actually have a patio that they've set out there with an umbrella and sun chair. So they come from their shanty out behind the bushes there, and they go out and relax out in the sun. This is all on the Oxnard side. And then here is another picture of another shanty that they actually have plywood that they've used to construct their structure, their fort, and a carpet there that leads up into the fort that they've constructed there. So people have gone out of their way to really construct these encampments out there, and it's something that we definitely need to address. And I'll be speaking with the Public Works Director and City Manager to see how much of this we want to just handle as a city on our own, as opposed to waiting for the city of Oxnard to address these issues. So again, we added ourselves onto Twitter, so now you can find us on Twitter, and if the city council has any questions.
Yes, so we'll start over here with Councilmember Hensley.
Thanks again for your dedication, viewer work, and the whole police department. Really appreciate. The citizens of, or residents of Wainimi Bay has asked me to bring some of their concerns forward. Between Ukiah and Lido on Channel Islands, there's a wall there, and the homeless sneak in there at nighttime and sleep on people's porches in the bushes. They leave various different things. It's not the nicest. And it's a real concern. And other people have reported to me, "Jim, get up around 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning and look out your back door. People is traversing through." And this morning, I looked out and get my paper at 5:30. It wasn't there yet. And some guy's walking down trying to put on a shirt. At first, I thought maybe he's getting ready to work, but no, no. And the more I saw him, it was obvious that he had just slept and was trying to find someplace to get a little bit warmer. So I don't know how we're gonna approach that. Maybe if occasionally the police officers can go in there around, as it starts getting a little bit light, and checking some of the people. And I don't know what, how we can solve the situation on Channel Islands between Ukiah and Lido. And maybe I can work with you or some of your officers to figure out how we can do that. Thank you so much, though.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Sharkey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will say the chief was an excellent participant in the dunk booth, and that I've still got a pretty good fastball for an old guy.
Yes, you do.
That's a moment that'll live forever.
I think I was dunked 100 times. I was in that water for three hours.
I think I was the first one, wasn't I?
Yes.
Worth every penny, worth every penny. Just a couple of questions. I was looking at the shoplifting numbers, and they kind of go up and down, and we are dealing with small numbers here. I recall a few years ago, we had some very specific people that were doing a lot of shoplifting. Is this a case where we know who's doing it, or, you know, is there just like a few people that do it, or do we have a handle on what's happening there?
It is a few and often known people. It's just that with the decriminalization of narcotics and thefts in general, it's, the risk reward is there. So you're getting those serial thefts now from the same people over and over, as were in previous years. Once you were convicted of it one time, it would become a felony the second time if you received jail time the first time you were convicted of it. And so it acted as a deterrent to do it again. Now there's no deterrent. And so you're either getting fines or time served for the offense, and it, the risk or the reward is there for you to go back and do it again.
Is this drug related, or is this kids?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Great. And, you know, segueing right into the vandalism, we appreciate what kinds, what those businesses are, and they have security cameras and all that, and we get pictures of who did it. Do we know anything about motive?
Motive, I don't know in terms of, the first one appeared to be just a straight vandalism based on the one shot into the window, and he's running. The second one seemed to be like they were looking at making potential entry into the business. The first one was a single suspect. The second incident at Skunk Masters was two individuals who were trying to get into the location. So the security features that we have there with the video cameras, the bars, the reinforced steel doors, it's very difficult to get into those establishments, and they'll quickly find that out.
Yeah, I, you know, there's any number of windows they could have smashed, and they picked that one, so you kind of wonder.
Right, right.
And the, the speed, traffic speed survey, do we have a mandate from the state to do that periodically in general, to keep our speed limits up to date?
The Public Works Director will have to answer that. I do know if we do any type of speed enforcement on those roadways, they do need to be, I forget what they call it.
It's within a certain percentile?
That's correct. And so we do need a speed survey to go out there before we can do any type of speed enforcement, because it needs to be within like five miles per hour of what the speed data says.
Right, right. Yeah, we, I know a few years back, we did a pretty extensive one, and we set speed limits all over the city, and I just, I wasn't sure if there was a state mandate that we had to do that periodically or not.
So we can actually use this device, or Public Works can actually use this device to bring the numbers more up to date if they needed to.
Yeah. Great. And, you know, the tree lining, I'd like to be there, but I'm gonna be one state west celebrating my 20th wedding anniversary, so I'll have to miss that this year. But thank you so much.
You got it.
Do you have any questions? All right, so thank you, Chief. I do have a couple of questions for you. So in your presentation, when you said that there was some, there was some work being done to eradicate the homeless from the beach area, and then you said they ran out of money. So I didn't catch who ran out of money.
The city of Oxnard Environmental Resources Division. They had money to actually clean up the entire area, and they underestimated how much they were going to need. So they only got to a certain point, and none of it addressed handling the encampments on our side, or on the side that's closest to our city.
So it just effectively removed that trash that you spoke about?
No, they didn't touch the encampments at all. All they did was work closer to where the Halico plant was and worked their way towards the beach. And after 52 tons of trash, they ran out of money. And I received that update... And I received that update this morning, and so they're looking to getting more money to now deal with the issues on the beach.
Do you know when they're going to get that money?
I don't, but I know they are definitely talking about it. So I'm waiting to hear back from them, and then I'll be discussing with the City Manager and the Public Works Director if we're going to take on that project just to handle it and get it done.
Okay. And then another question I have for you. So now that we have these cannabis businesses open, I know that none of the clients could actually take any of the product onsite or on the premises and all. They'd have to go somewhere else to do that. So in my community, I just actually smelled some of it coming from a neighbor's house. And so is this you, or is this maybe the city attorney can address this? Can people actually do this outside? But do the windows need to be closed? What are the restrictions there, you know, in terms of like being out in public?
You cannot be out in public smoking this, whether it be at the parks or the beach, just like cigarettes. Now you can be smoking it in the privacy of your own home, and it would just be being a courteous neighbor to close your windows so everyone else doesn't have to smell it. And in terms of enforcing that, if someone were to call on their neighbor, we'd attempt to address it informally and see if we could handle it that way. It'd be really difficult to start giving out citations for somebody who was smoking cannabis in their own residence, just as if they were a smoker.
Okay. That's it? All right. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we move on to item number 10, City Manager Reports and Comments. So Mr. Butler.
Yeah, just a reminder to everyone to get out and vote tomorrow if you haven't already voted, voted by mail. We do have a receptacle here, ballot receptacle here in our City Hall lobby. So we can accept ballots here at City Hall until 5:30 tomorrow, because City Hall closes at 5:30. If you are after 5:30, you can take your ballot up to the community center, Werving Carpenter Community Center on Park Street, until the polls close at eight. So that's kind of the rundown if you want to drop your ballot off locally tomorrow and you're not going through the normal voting process at your precinct. Then I don't want to steal all of Councilmember Hensley's thunder, but he was going to ask a series of questions about the grant writing contract, and he was good enough to send his questions in advance, which is always nice and helps. So I'm going to pass out something that the council can, the council may remember, back in August, August 17th, during my, I used to call it the Weekly City Manager Report, but I can't produce it every single week I found, so I guess the bi-weekly report. Oh, sorry, I'll take that back. We did make a brief comment. This would be at the top of page two. And we did a little report to the council. I'll just read it word for word. Suspension of California Consulting Grant Writing Contract. We recently made the tough decision to suspend our contract with California Consulting, the grant writing firm that we have been working with since November of 2017. We reached the conclusion that since most of the grants that we would be eligible for are in the area of public works, and since Don Villafana is scrambling to stay afloat right now in light of the retirement of Steve Hickox, it is not possible for us at this time to be the kind of effective partner with California Consulting that we would need to be in order to be successful in securing and managing grants. It doesn't make sense to keep spending the $3,000 in general fund money every month when we can't provide the information and support that California Consulting needs to do their job well. We told the leadership at California Consulting that we would reevaluate this decision during the first quarter of 2019, once the Steve Hickox vacancy is filled and things have settled down in Public Works a little bit. We remain committed to improving our performance as an organization in the area of grant acquisition and management. So basically what happened, and I'll walk through the questions that Councilmember Hensley had, some of those were answered in that paragraph probably, but, sure, okay. Yeah, so it's kind of sad, because California Consulting's a good, very good company. We were pleased with their performance. But part of being successful is we have to provide a lot of information and work closely with them on all these grant applications, and we just, we were finding a lot of the really good grants that are out there for us are in the Public Works Department. And with all the turmoil in Public Works, vacancies, and the Hickox departure, we were just not able to justify spending that money every month, because we weren't able to give them the support they needed. So we really hope to get back, whether it's California Consulting or another firm, once we get into 2019. You did have a really good question that you asked. One was, what is the monthly fee? It's 3,000. So, yeah, 36 a year. Yeah, that's right. And then another question I think was very fair is, have we actually received any grants? And if so, for what amount? So, you know, did we bring more in grants, bring more money in grants than we paid out? And we actually finished up a net $1,000. We paid the eight, the $3,000 a month for eight months, so three times eight is 24,000. And just as of the last couple of weeks, we took delivery of a check for $25,000 from the Wood, is it pronounced Clisson?
Wood Clisson.
The Wood Clisson Foundation. $25,000 from the foundation for our Police Canine Program, which we hope to get resurrected again soon. So we basically, almost broke even. We spent 24,000 for fees, but then we collected a $25,000 grant that California Consulting really, you know, again, with support from staff, but they were the lead in working with that agency and getting the funding nailed down. So again, we really hope to get it, get back with them sometime in 2019. I totally believe, or agree with what the council has said, that we want to start being more effective in grant management, but we couldn't justify paying the money every month right now until we get things stabilized in Public Works.
Okay. Is there anything else for you to report, or any other comments?
Just going to thank the chief, Chief Salinas, for being my kind of speaking, Speakers Bureau Partner. We've done somewhere between 28 and 30 presentations over the last, starting going back to February. They were partly Measure U related, community education on Measure U, but also just basically going out to a lot of HOAs, business groups, the Sunset Supper event, to get our faces out into the community more. And we're kind of like a pair of aging rock stars now that are, we've been on tour for a while, and we're, we've realized that we're not in our twenties anymore. We're, we're feeling pretty tired, but we're, the tour is over for now.
But usually, rock stars then take this break for the holidays.
That's right, yeah. So hopefully we'll, and I actually, coming out of this experience, I would like to do a, like a Speakers Bureau, establish that so that we are, this isn't just a one-time exercise for us, but that we're out there more, and that we include even the other department directors to get out and talk to those HOAs maybe once a year, as often as they want to have us.
Good, very good. All right. Thank you. And then we move on to item number 11, Councilmember Reports, Comments, and Requests for Future Agenda Items. So we'll start down here with Councilmember Hensley.
No, sake of time, I forego.
Okay. Councilmember Sharkey.
Well, Madam Mayor, as you well know, and I don't want to steal your thunder on this, but you hosted a mayor's bike ride for the 70th, part of the 70th anniversary of the city on Saturday, rode down to the lighthouse, got, I found a bike in the back of my barn that works, and had a great time. And you and I both were, attended the Cycle of the California Coast meeting, and this could be a part of that, and you may want to talk a little bit more about that, because that's, that's an interesting group that we should be part of.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protember?
Yeah. All right, so I'll continue with just a couple of things, talking about the California, Cycle California Coast. It's really built on cycling tourism, and it's really regarding the fact that we have some excellent locations, wonderful weather, but also we could compete possibly with other areas that do a bang-up job with capitalizing on tourism. We could possibly be the kind that happens in Oregon, you know, the Bike Oregon program. But we do have some energy behind it, and it's a joint Santa Barbara County, Ventura County effort. So it's involving from supervisors to folks that are in part of tourism and chamber, as well as folks that are part of the business environment and others, and other government entities. So there's all kinds of things going on, from marketing to a website, to finding bike-friendly locations where cyclists can come through, for if it's, you know, filling up their air, you know, their tire with air, or grabbing some more water for their water bottle, those kinds of things, as well as some other amenities. So we continue on with that. I think the next meeting is set for January, and I know Councilmember Sharkey will be part of this group here, but will probably be involved some way, shape, or form, because he is a longtime and avid cyclist. And so I'll, I'll be part of that discussion in that group then, as we continue on. Mayor's Bike Ride, hopefully we'll have a few more in the upcoming year. It may not be the Mayor's Bike Ride, but I'll continue on with that, because it was a real joy actually meeting some folks who had just moved into the community, whether it be a year ago or six months ago, or somebody who still lives on the East Coast but bought a second home in the area. And so, you know, it's really getting to know your neighbor, and it was an enjoyable ride. And so I thank you, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, as well as your staff here, the team, to put that together. Also, I attended the First Responder Event that Huonimi Bay hosts on a yearly basis, and so we, or they honor those from Fire Department, Police Department, as well as EMT, or those that respond on emergencies. And there's always individuals from each of those organizations. So they do a really nice job at Huonimi Bay. They put together a whole ceremony with then gifts. They bestow gifts on the folks, they give them awards, and they put together a really nice luncheon, and it's done by the association, but the members that live out of Huonimi Bay. And so Councilmember Hensley was in attendance as well. Last but not least, there's a quarterly Sister City meeting that the deputy city manager and I will be attending on Monday. It's in downtown LA, or, sorry, it's Saturday, and it's in downtown LA. So these are quarterly meetings, and with that, we hope to cement our relationship with the city of Ensenada, Baja California, Mexico, as our first sister city, and we're awaiting their response from a letter. All right. So with that, then, we'll continue on to item 12, Continuation of Open Forum. So at this time, we'll give members of the, who are here, the meeting, a chance to talk on, about things that are not on the agenda. Seeing none then, this is a special request for adjournment tonight, and I did send this along to the city manager. So we'll adjourn to the regular meeting scheduled on November 19th here at 6:00 PM at City Hall. And I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of the North Ogden, Utah mayor who was killed in Afghanistan over the weekend. And his name is Brent Taylor. He was a major in the Utah National Guard, and he had, he's 39, or was 39, and had been the town's mayor since 2013. The town of North Ogden is about 19,000 strong, and so they're relatively just within that number of, you know, where we are at 20, 22,000 and counting. And so this gentleman served and served proudly and was killed, and so I'd like to recognize him in the adjournment for tonight's meeting. Thank you so much.